Good evening, this is the Walpole Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight is Monday, November 18th, it is 7:00 PM. The first case we have is case number 24-19 for 92 County Road. And the applicant has asked for a continuance of this case and would like to continue until December 16th at 7:00 PM here at Town Hall. Is there somebody that wants to make that motion?
So moved.
Moved by Judy.
Second.
Seconded by Drew. Any further discussion on 92 County Road? Okay. All those in favor of continuing until December 16th at 7:00 PM, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, so carried. Okay. The next case we have is another continuance from last time, and it's case number 24-14 for 34 Chandler Ave.
They didn't request a continuance.
No.
Never mind.
Right. Yeah. This is for a special permit under Section 94A of the Walpole zoning bylaws for construction of an addition that is within the pre-existing non-conforming front yard setback. So is the applicant here?
Hi, also my name is Danny Ali. And the last time was like I think for this understanding about the provisions with the architectural drawings and the block mix. And right now we have the exterior dimensions that are surveying and matching for 60, the voltage 60s for our pit addition.
How many square feet?
Sixty.
Six. Okay. One six, sixteen?
Six zero.
Six zero. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. That's not what's being shown on the plan. The plan shows 48 square feet, six by eight.
Six by eight are interior dimensions.
Okay. Okay.
It's seven by eight and a half on the area.
Yeah. The interior is seventy-one by eighty-six.
Okay. Okay. And the comment has been added about the water department will be notified prior to excavation, so that clears up any concerns about the water service going into the house? And that's shown on the plan.
Yes, on the block mix.
Do any board members have any questions on this? I'm just looking, can anybody see the date on these plans?
I haven't seen the date.
I haven't seen it. Is this newly revised?
So John, it's very hard to see, but if you look at the above proposed conditions in that table, it's item number three, 11-524, looks like the most.
It's a revision.
Revision date?
The first.
Okay. And how about on the, I see 11-1524 on the, on the architecturals. Okay. Is there, board members good with this? Okay. Do you want to close the hearing? Okay. Okay. At the request of the applicant, does somebody want to make a motion to close the hearing for case number 24-14, 34 Chandler Ave?
So moved.
Moved by Judy.
Second.
Seconded by Drew. Any further discussion on closing the hearing? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, so carried. In voting on this will be the five regular members. Okay. Now, did we have any conditions from last time? I don't think we did.
The water was the only thing we had.
Yeah, that was the only concern. And that's been resolved. Okay. Does somebody want to make a motion to approve case number 24-14, 34 Chandler Ave, special permit under Section 94A of the zoning bylaws for construction of an addition that is within the pre-existing non-conforming front yard setback, as shown on the plan, the plot plan dated 11-52024, and based on the architectural plans of 11-152024 with the standard conditions?
So moved.
Moved by Judy.
Second.
Seconded by Mark. Any further discussion on this? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, so carried. Okay. Good luck. Thanks. Okay. Okay. Next we have, oh. Good evening, Mr. Petrosi.
Is that where we're going?
Well, yeah, we're gonna go, we're gonna go back to the top of the agenda for Wall Street, so Ms. Conroy is going to recuse herself. And, so, at our last meeting, Mr. Petrosi, we had a discussion about what board members would be voting on this, this case, and I should also clarify what we're doing tonight. This is, this is case number 24-11, and actually, why do we do this? Before we open those cases, do you want to continue case number 22-11, which is the 40B case?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I think in the interest of time and good faith, I'd like to continue that. So, I'd like to request a continuance of that application, and so, let's call, how long does it take? Let's call it 60 days.
Okay. So that would bring us out to January, how about the end of January?
Sure.
Okay. Till January 31st?
Right, so it's gotta be.
2025. Okay.
March.
When do you end of March?
March 31st.
March 31st, yeah.
I don't think that is, but March 31st.
It's actually Monday. Monday.
Okay.
The 31st of March is a Monday.
Okay. Okay. So for the 40B, does somebody want to make a motion at the applicant's request to continue case number 22-11 until January 31st, 2025, and an extension of time until?
Actually, oh, I'm sorry, John, I just, 31st is a, is a Friday, so do we want to pick like a?
No. Let's, let's go with, do we have a?
We don't have it yet, but it would follow.
Next week would be the first February meeting, right?
Just do the first February meeting?
Yeah. Mr. Petrosi, do you want to go with the first February meeting? For the, for the continuance?
Yeah, I think it's the fifth.
Okay. Okay. Does somebody want to make a motion to continue case number 22-11 until February 5th, 2025, with an extension of time until March 31st?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dave, seconded by Drew, and this is just for the 40B application. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, so carried. Okay. Now for tonight's, we've got case number 24-11, Nine Pinnacle Drive, special permit under Section 6C 4A of the bylaws for more than one principal building on a lot, as well as a variance under 6, 6B1 for rear yard setback relief. And we also have, running concurrent with this, case number 24-13 for a special permit for, to allow earth and other materials be dumped, filled, excavated within the floodplain protection overlay district. This relief is sought in relation to the proposed pinnacle point housing development located at the site off Pinnacle Drive. Okay. Mr. Petrosi, is that variance still live?
No, we withdrawn the variance request without prejudice.
Okay. So that's what we have, that's what we have before us tonight, is the 240A cases. Okay. So from our last meeting, you had a question about what board members were eligible to vote on this, and as of now, all board members are eligible to vote on it.
Well, except.
Well, except Mr. Don Tremont is new to the board, so he is not, Mr. Hegler is eligible to vote on it, and Mr. Delaney and Mr. Anderson missed one meeting, but they've done the Mullen Rule on that.
Okay, great, thank you. Appreciate it. So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just go back a little bit, since we've, it's been a couple of months since we really had any discussion, real discussion, and I'd just like to hit on some of the topics that the board had requested previously. So the first, the first question is the land exchange with the two of Butters, that's the board's concerned about. So what I've shown here on, highlighted in red is the property that is owned by the homeowner at Seven Pinnacle Drive. What's highlighted in blue is the property that's owned by the homeowner at Three Pinnacle Drive. So we've agreed to exchange properties, provided that their lots remain in compliance with zoning. So what you see highlighted in yellow is the land that will be exchanged for the homeowner at Three Pinnacle Drive. And the area that's shown in pink is the area that will be exchanged for the homeowner at Seven Pinnacle Drive. Those exchanges will keep those lots in compliance with the zoning dimensional requirements, and will keep them in good standing. Plus, in the rear of Seven Pinnacle Drive, I don't know if folks have been out there, but his backyard drops off about 25 feet, straight down from a retaining wall that's there, so part of this, of this development is done with the grading that will take place into his, into this area, into his backyard, to give him more of a usable backyard than the company has. So that was question number one. Question number two at the time was the ownership or rights to Bird Pond, which eliminated our requirement for a variance, a rear yard variance. So, as I've indicated previously, Wall Street has an agreement to purchase the pond, we will be proceeding with purchasing that pond in short order. What that does is it essentially adds to the application for theoretically an additional 18 acres that goes with the subject property that's currently 3.7 or 8 acres. So I think Patrick had made a comment that we needed their land in order to meet the zoning requirement of one unit for every 10,000 square feet, but that really isn't true because we added 18 acres. So those 18 acres, if we had to apply the zoning per the requirements, I think we calculated 69 units potential from the pond area. But in any case, we provided documentation for the trust that owns the pond, the trustee that signed the agreement, and a letter of documents that we were authorized to appear in front of the zoning board for, with, with the land that being included. And I, I don't know if you remember, but we did re-advertise at that time an amended application that included the trust property along with power property in the application. So, so that is now part of the application that is, is ongoing. What is interesting here, you know, these yellow portions that were on the, for some reason, when the, when the property was subdivided, it was originally supposed to be a cul-de-sac where the house of Three Pinnacle is located now. And the previous building commissioner decided that he wanted a square lot, so he squared the lot off, created that finger-like strip of land on pond, and then those areas became, kept ownership with the previous landowner, which now we purchased as part of our ownership. So since then, we've undergone some revision based on the comments that were issued by town engineer and Patrick and fire department and other town staff. I'll just go over a little, a few of them right now, and, and I've given a list of response that is prepared by our engineer, John Glossa, who's here to answer any questions that I can't answer. So, so the first item that was commented on was the zoning schedule to reflect the additional parcel into the Bird Pond parcel, so now that's all included in the calculation. And we've revised the setbacks to the pond, because now the rear yard of this project is actually the other side of the pond, so it was another 240 something odd feet of rear yard technically in the seat. So, and then I just went over the land swap. We added in the areas that are highlighted in orange, the area for snow storage, we've added the overlay that was requested by the town engineer. For those of you who don't know, that Pinnacle Drive was recently repaid, so there could be some other excavation that might take place in Pinnacle Drive, although I'm not quite sure that there will be, because the sewer is, as I'll talk about soon, is off of the back end of the property from Riverwalk, and the water has already been stuffed off into the site from the previous construction. We've added the stop sign, the ramps at the entrance, and we added visitor parking, I think five or six visitor parking spaces that are on the site. And I pointed out to Patrick earlier this week that Riverwalk is, I think 55 units, they only have one visitor parking space on it, no sidewalk, no sidewalks either. The biggest change on this from the previous plans was the stormwater management. Since that, our last meeting, we've been out there with the town engineer to do soil testing, and that resulted in.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think the mic in the podium is working at all. Can't hear the applicant at all. We hear you in the room, but it's not projected. Nobody can hear.
Is the green light on? Is the, is the green light on?
Yeah, the green light is on.
All right, thanks.
He needs to get to it.
I'll talk a little louder.
And maybe lift up the microphone a little closer.
How's that? Is that better? Well, apparently, I don't know, I can turn this around when we talk.
No. You present to the board, and I already saw people looking at the diagrams up on the screen in the back.
So the biggest revision that had to take place over the last month and a half was the stormwater management that was designed for the project. Town engineer previously requested that we do soil testing on the property, which we did back in August, and use soil. And then the results of that soil analysis resulted in a change in the stormwater infiltration systems, as you can see, the stormwater now, everything on the side of the building infiltrated into the stormwater area system. All of the rooftops, all of the gutters are all being directed into the infiltration, so that looks basically no service runoff leaving the site.
Might I direct the same back on?
Yeah, the only change was we made it bigger, because we used a slower infiltration system, it's based on the system. So the, the system got expanded with more chambers, and what's highlighted in orange here are the number of chambers that need to be installed to capture all of this water. All of this will be privately maintained, it's a private homeowners association that will maintain it. These take the place of large open catch bases that might have been required. We have other land down, further down the pond, and so that stormwater system is independent of any other runoff that may be coming from Pinnacle Drive. Now, Pinnacle Drive does have an easement there, and we'll be intercepting that water and putting it into our system to discharge. How good of a discharge would that be?
Okay, hold on. So, the, right now, water drains from Pinnacle Drive, does that drain out to Bird Pond?
It does.
Okay. And are you now going to divert that water from Pinnacle Drive into your galleys underground?
Yeah, I think the, I think, I think that's the direction that it'll go.
Mr. Glossa, is that?
It will treat it into our stormwater management system, and then it'll discharge eventually with all the water that, you know, the thing with, you get a significant storm, that, all of that water. Also, as you can see here, these, doesn't take the whole length of Pinnacle Drive, just the area that is captured in those four catch bases and two manholes that currently drain down an easement. Now we'll, it'll be necessary for us to go to town meeting and ask the town to abandon that easement, and so we fully expect that that would be in everyone's best interest to do that. And then as far as the sewer and water go, as I mentioned earlier, this water is stuffed off from Pinnacle Drive into the site, as part of the previous development. Back when Pinnacle Drive was approved, it was, it was reserved for a 69 unit, a building was proposed on that, on this site. And back then, the zoning requirement, I believe, was 3, 3,750 square feet per unit. That got you to the 69 units. But apparently, obviously, it never got built, so that water main is still there, and it will provide service to each of the homes. Each of the homes will be, have its own individual service, and it just came from a meeting of the sewer water commissioners, and they were waiting, you know, for the comment from the town engineer, but their biggest concern, I guess, if you can call it concern, was trying to loop the water in, in somehow, in the development somehow, loop it back out, either to Pinnacle Drive or within the system itself. There's not, there's opportunities to do that from this vantage point, and loop it to here or loop it up to there, but I'll wait for them to make that comment going forward. The sewer again is being connected, will be gravity system to sewer manhole that's sitting on the property that we're purchasing, and it's just a straight line shot. There is, there isn't a question of, you know, rights to that sewer, because it runs through Riverwalk, we'll have to resolve that. In the event that that avenue isn't permitted, then we will just put a toll station here and follow that sewer up there on Pinnacle Drive, so it really doesn't affect the project. So other than that, I mean, I think, I think that gets you pretty much up to speed with where we're at with the revised plans. Unfortunately, we just filed the revised plan and stormwater management report today, so it'll take a little time, I would imagine, for the town engineer to review that. We have previously submitted attorney analysis to the fire department, and I believe those have been accepted, though. And I'm pretty sure, I think that's pretty much all I can add to right now. I've actually showed some architectural of the types of buildings that might be built in, and the single family, the character of the, of the development fits in fairly nicely with the rest of the Pinnacle Drive.
Okay. So I have a few engineering questions, possibly for Mr. Glossa. Good evening.
Good evening.
So the driveway going down from Pinnacle into the, the development site, what is the slope, do you know what the slope is of that?
I believe it's 7%, and I think it's on the site plan and the grading and everything. So I think we talked about before, the idea was to match what's required in the planning board mostly regulations as far as the slope goes.
So, is there a place on here where it actually gives the slope, or you just know that because you've done the calculation?
I thought there was, I can't see it from the plane, but my instructions to the person who designed this is to make that 7%.
Okay. Okay. So, slope of?
I can definitely verify that. It says 7%.
Okay. I saw that number, that says.
I think I see some, someone else. Do you want to get the full size, please? What sheet are you?
I'm looking at sheet four of nine, and there is a number on, I, I mean, I can't.
It's very small.
Yes.
That's awesome.
I think that's the number right, that's what Dave thought it would, I can't, there's no way I can read that. Okay. So a slope of 7% going down, and now I want to clarify with you, the bit about the water that drains currently from Pinnacle Drive goes through an easement, and does it drain into Bird Pond, or does it just drain out?
So, right now, it drains into Bird Pond, and it's going to drain into Bird Pond when this is done. So that's, we're simply relocating where that pipe goes.
So.
So, right now, that pipe exits right here. So, because of all of this construction, we've got a drain line that comes in, exits, exits the drain. Let me just find grading, drainage plan, and it's going to exit in a different location. I think it exits down by the, the pass test.
Okay, yeah, I, I'm looking at the drainage plant, I do see, it looks like an easement going out.
Right. So that's where it's going to discharge, but it would be pretty much economically impossible to take all of that runoff that goes into Pinnacle Drive and put it. And put that, we can separate that from the water coming from Pinnacle Drive, put that into the leaching galleys and then let the rest of it go through. So, it would be sort of kind of to the maximum extent practical. I mean, I don't think we're really required to do any of that. I mean, that's an existing condition, but we can make it at...
Well, it also goes to the bit about moving the easement. And why do you want, want to move the easement? Is it to get building up?
I don't think we really, I think we're, our galleys, I believe, are over the top of that pipe. They're not, they're not in, we could just leave that pipe there.
Why wouldn't you then?
Well, it just doesn't make sense.
Well, because, is it because the easement runs through house number ten?
It could be, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, we're, we're allowed to relocate the easement.
No, you, you have to go to, you just said you have to go to town meeting to have that done.
We're finally approved, but we're, we're allowed to relocate easements provided it doesn't, the decrease, the need, the effectiveness of the easement. So, it's, it's, kids law has been decided many times.
So, there's an easement and now, the way I look at it is the easement runs through where you want to put a house. That's one of the things I'm seeing there.
It does.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. So, it goes back to, I want, this is what I want to have clarification on. The current water from Pinnacle is not going into the galleys. That's going to either stay the way it is on the existing easement or you're going to try to change the easement so it goes down the road and then discharges down by the cul-de-sac.
Water from the street and from the any land, right, that flows to Pinnacle Drive, that's above Pinnacle Drive, right? So, the house is on Pinnacle Drive and their front and backyards, assuming their front yards pitch backwards, but I know their backyard, all of that is included in the drainage system for the, for the, for the Pinnacle development here because there's no way to separate that up. So, that's part of our watershed. But Pinnacle Drive itself is not really part of the watershed that flows to this theoretically, right? It all goes into Pinnacle Drive, goes into the catch basins, goes through a drainage system and then discharges at that location. So, that's sort of a separate watershed from what we're developing here.
Right. But because the easement goes across this property, you have to figure out where that's going?
Yeah, I believe, I just looked at the plan, but I believe the pipe actually is, because we're lifting this site up, I believe that pipe is actually below the galleys. So, that's probably why we want to kind of move it out of the way. Just don't want it underneath it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just have a question that kind of popped in my head. Units ten through fourteen, could you change the layout of those to avoid easement so they'd be, I mean, you own the property in the back now, so you know, the variance isn't an issue. It's just a thought.
First, we're going to propose relocating easement is what we're allowed to do.
Yeah, that's just a suggestion.
I heard about a sewer manhole on the property. Whose property is that connection on right now?
It's on one of the, I think it's on three Pinnacle, on the strip.
Okay. And when you do the land swap, you'll, you'll get that manhole? Is that, is that correct?
That's correct. There is an easement already on record that allows us to connect into that. So, the strip of land just, you know, just means to, to, to do the land swap for the zoning development.
Okay. So, that's your preferred route, that's your preferred way of connecting to the sewer is at the, the manhole at the lower, at the lower part of the property?
Yeah, it allows the gravity system as opposed to a sewer.
As opposed to a pump system? That was my question.
Right.
Where would, if you can't do that and you're asking for approval of this plan, where would the pump, where would the pump system go?
If we had to put a pump system, I've never really looked at it because we both sort of had the gravity system.
More than likely would go in some area where the storm, where the storm storage, eliminate from those, those storage areas.
Because what I heard tonight was that you, you have the right to connect to it, but you're not sure, there's a concern about Rose, Rose Court, whether they would allow you to connect to it? That's what you said tonight?
I, I think, you know, I've just had a conversation with the sewer commissioners and it seems to be, they're going to do some homework on it, but typically you put a sewer line in, the town takes, takes ownership of that sewer line. So, in this particular case, we're not sure. The project was done about twenty, twenty-five years ago. We're just going to do our homework on that and see, see where it goes. And if it is privately owned, there's obviously negotiations with the homeowners association at Riverwalk. And then there's the pump station option for us to do the project. And, not to want to get into the, but with the pond, I don't know if you follow the pond situation with the pond getting drained, you know, there's a sewer main directly across the pond.
Yep.
That is also available to connect into as well. So, there's two or three options, just a question of, you know, we need to do our homework on whether or not that sewer line is owned by the town or is privately owned.
Okay. So, I think that's something that needs to get resolved.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, before, before we could even consider, you know, the, the plans here.
Well, I don't know that it would ever, I don't know that it would get applied to taking over on a special project. It's a matter of conditional type of situation that you would put into your approval if you so choose to, you know, obviously we either submit evidence that we have permission to connect in or we provide a pump station detail to, to the board.
Right. So, that's why I'm asking these questions.
Yes, those are very good questions too.
Okay.
Appreciate them.
Sure. And, Mr. Glasser, the final question I have is on the fire department equipment. Has, have they been given the, this most recent plan for determining turning radiuses for fire equipment?
Well, nothing has changed relative to the roadway network besides the roadway, the cul-de-sac. I did bring the turning analysis with me if you want to look at it, but...
More important, has the fire department, do they have it and have they, have they seen this?
They, I don't think they've seen the revised plan, but the plan itself of the right of way, the roadway, it's not, nothing that did change. What, what changed was just the utility type of infrastructure to the project.
Okay. So, we, I just want to make sure that, Patrick, has the fire department signed off on, on that?
I'd have to go back and check. I don't believe they have it on.
Okay. Okay. So, we'll find out where that, that stands with the fire department. Okay. Those are my questions. Does anybody else have questions for Mr. Glasser?
Excuse me. All the downspouts are tying into the infiltration basins?
Correct.
So, where is the sort of ownership line from, is it all maintained by HOA as far as rooftops, gutters, piping into the infiltration? You had said earlier that the infiltration was maintained by an HOA.
Each homeowner, the way we're going to set up the homeowners association is that each of the homeowners will be responsible for their building, their connections, sewer and water drainage. If they, if they have a nice stand and it keeps the water from flowing down the gutter, that's going to be the homeowner's responsibility. Anything that's in the common areas, which have the roadway, the landscaping, those things will be homeowner association as a group that will be paid a fee, like pavement replacement, over long-term, long-term infrastructure requirements, operations and maintenance of the stormwater system. Those will all be as a fee to each homeowner, either monthly or annually. But each homeowner is going to be responsible for their own shelf, building, roof, siding, driveway, downspout, all of that.
So, yeah, I mean, I guess, are we, do we have an HOA tentative plan or would we see that beforehand or that...
We don't have one submitted. We can make a condition be submitted prior to...
Just, just so you know, Delaney, that, you know, in our subdivisions today, when we do a subdivision, in our particular subdivision, we, we create a homeowners association to maintain the detention basins and the stormwater, the common areas, mainly because the town doesn't have the ability to maintain the stormwater. So, I do that even though, for example, Borden Lane, Borden Estates, that's a public road or, so, but we, we have a homeowners association that maintains the basin because we want it kept in a neat condition. So, that would be the same thing here. I would happy to provide a, a sample that we've currently doing one on Brook Lane, by Union Square. So, if you'd like, we can...
Are the, are the similar instances like this, the infiltration system put in the main access of six of the houses in this development? Are they similar design in some of your other projects?
In that particular case, that subdivision, it's a big, huge basin.
Right. In the dri, in the roadway?
No.
Oh, okay.
Big, huge basement on a, on a lot.
Somewhere not impeding on people's access to their house?
I mean, in this particular case, we're not, you know, we don't have the space to do, or we have the space, but it's not, this is more practical, but it's, and it's more expensive obviously too, so, but...
Okay.
That's how it will be maintained.
The other thing is you, you had mentioned you, you had put in parking spaces. I don't see any sort of landscaping plan. Are you intending on sort of providing some sort of screening so that headlights aren't shining into the back of this property, number eleven, Pinnacle?
Well, that elevation is probably about twenty feet below.
Okay.
That, there's a block wall that is, there, you're going to be, there's no need for screening there.
So, the lights will just shine on the block wall?
Yeah.
Okay. And there's no plan for any sort of sight lighting or anything like that, right?
What do you mean?
There was a comment from the health department about some sort of sidewalks and lighting within the project?
Well, we're not, we're not proposing any sidewalks, but as we get along, we'll, we'll provide a photometric plan for our street lighting and decide whether or not the lighting is going to be from the houses themselves or whether or not we're going to have light standards along the, along the edge of the right of way.
That's all I have for this time right now. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Are there any neighbors or residents who want to comment or have questions about this?
Judy Conroy, four fifty-five Allen Street, Walpole. I do have a couple of questions. Mr. Delaney just mentioned sidewalks and if I read the plan, which is hard to see because it's very small, that the, the driveway or the roadway into this project is twenty-two feet wide. I have a little concern with that. And I see a number of units there and this section of town is very walkable. I don't like that word, but to get to the athletic fields, little downtown East Walpole and Bird Park, so I find it a little unusual that for the number of people that may be living there, there'd be no sidewalk at least coming up onto Pinnacle. The other question I had was, I see a hundred-year floodplain delineation on page four of nine, which looks to be, and I don't, I can't tell what the elevations are, but it looks to be quite close to units four through eight and it swells away, but then unit fourteen, it's sort of at the foundation. And I was just wondering who might be able to comment on the potential of the hundred-year floodplain line? So, that was one question. And in speaking, number three, in speaking of stormwater going into Bird Pond, with the potential of Bird Pond being drained, what does stormwater look like from Pinnacle and now this project? What does that look like going into a potential drained pond? And what are the ramifications to that?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, we can ask those, those questions. Okay. Twenty-two, start with the twenty-two foot wide roadway going in.
Yes, we'd be happy to provide a sidewalk from that entrance out to Pinnacle Drive if that's, I think, as I mentioned earlier, you know, the entire development at Riverwalk has no sidewalks, no visitor parking. So, I just have a, you know, a difficult time when people pick on me, you know, so that would be one of the issues that I think I'd be picked on.
So, Mr. Petrosi, nobody gets picked on?
I understand.
And what it is, is Rose Court was developed under an age-qualified village and those are different regulations for, than what you're, you're applying under. So, we're really talking in the world of zoning in which you're very well-versed in, we're talking two different things here.
Yes. I guess the fifty-five and older, they don't walk.
It's just with the, you know what? It's what the bylaw is.
Yeah, I don't know.
It's what the bylaw is, not, not anything more than that. So...
Let's, let's, let's now move on. Let's, so, let's talk about Bird Pond.
Okay. So, hold on. Can we talk about the twenty-two foot roadway going in? Is there a way that you can make that wider so that it's not as tight having two vehicles pass?
I don't know if I can. That's an engineering question. We'll take a look at it, but essentially, you know, now that we are going to own the pond, I guess, when the pond goes away, we can also, you know, push these houses back and fill that in and have no problems with the width of the roadway. But I'd like to just address the pond situation, for example, and the hundred-year flood. So, if the pond gets drained and it, in the, in the bank of the Napontet River goes, reverts back to its original stream channel, that stream channel is going to be at elevation eighty-eight. We're at elevation one hundred and three right now at the back of our property. So, what will happen is the hundred-year flood elevation get, will get recalculated because it will no longer be at that elevation. And the rest of the land, depending on how we, it's determined that should remain as, you know, some sort of parked land or some sort of amenity to the development or to the town, then that, that'll all come out into the equation. We may be back here to discuss that, you know, some of the, the comment is valid. There is a hundred-year floodplain there now. When the pond goes away, that hundred-year floodplain is going to change and it's going to be reduced down to probably, I'd, they told me ninety-three or ninety-four. So, it's going to go away. back to its original stream channel, that stream channel is going to be at elevation 88. We're at elevation 103 right now at the back of our property. So what will happen is, the 100-year flood elevation will get recalculated because it will no longer be at that elevation. And the rest of the land, depending on how we, it's determined that should remain as, you know, some sort of parked land or some sort of amenity to the development or to the town, then that, that'll all come out into the equation. We may be back here to discuss that, you know, some of the, the comment is valid. There is a 100-year floodplain there now. When the pond goes away, that 100-year floodplain is going to change, and it's going to be reduced down to probably, they told me 93 or 94, so it's going to go away. And so that's how it's going to be, I think it's going to happen that way.
Okay. I'm not sure, considering the drainage basin of the Napontet River, which extends all the way to Foxborough, whether there's five feet of water in the pond or not in a flood event, if that's going to make a difference. So, so you, was it an engineer that told you that it was going to drop?
I have the reports from the Department of Conservation Resources, the engineer that's working on the project.
That it would drop to 93 feet?
Well, I know that the bed of the, of the, of the stream channel is going to be at 88, and that only under significant rain events will the pond have any water.
Like 100-year flood, that's a significant rain event?
So even on a 500-year flood. So that's how it's designed. We'll let them decide what the elevation is going to be. I have no...
But right now, it's, right now what we're working with is the line that's on the map, the 100-year...
That's what's calculated to be on the...
That's what's calculated, and all the, all the buildings are outside of the 100-year flood, so.
Correct. Right. And we've eliminated any excavation inside the floodplain, so that special permit, I don't know how it applies, or, but...
So I did ask the building commissioner about that, because he's right, the retaining wall, I think it's units five through seven, and then obviously, unit 14, it looks like the floodplain, although that development is on the other side of the floodplain. The building commissioner didn't indicate whether or not it was, could be removed or not, so I guess, if you can answer that question.
What do you mean, let remove the flood?
He thought it was still applicable.
Okay, fine.
So...
It is.
So, from Ms. Conroy's comments, you're going to look at the 22-foot-wide roadway and also the sidewalks going up to Pinnacle Drive?
Right. We'll do that.
Anybody else want to comment on this? Okay.
My name is Joe Parlon. I'm a resident of town. I want to make sure I speak so everybody can hear me. I opposed a project earlier in the year that was being proposed in this town. Going through that process, I became very educated and have continued to educate myself on how the town of Walpole is treating its water supply and the bodies of water in town, which are both valuable resources for our community. And when I hear that these bodies of water are being placed at risk, it's of grave concern to me, because there's generations to come after us that we're responsible to. So I have one question, because I did a little homework here. I became aware of this project two weeks ago, literally walking outside of the back of St. Mary's Church in East Walpole of all places. And so my question to the board is, are they aware that the Napontet River Water Association, which is an environmental association that works to protect the Napontet River all the way from the ocean in and through Walpole and further, has a public access easement to this pond? And it's not just an access easement that you can walk there. In 2017, they acquired a public access easement that guarantees the public access to that pond for boating, so long as it's non-motorized boating, to include fishing and leisurely enjoyment of that water property. That's a public easement that was gained lawfully, and my question is, is how is that easement being abandoned to accommodate this, this proposed property? I talked to the watershed association today. They were somewhat shocked, the people that I spoke to. They were going to talk to some of their colleagues. I'm going to talk to them again tomorrow. I intend to be at a different meeting in the same building tomorrow night to further address this issue. And again, I'm just concerned as to how we're treating the resource of water in the town of Walpole. And it seems to me, you go right online and Google, that there's an easement that guarantees the people of the town of Walpole the right to use this pond. So I don't know how you can sell a pond and drain it if there's an easement that guarantees the usage of the water. So that would be the question I'd like to see the town answer. Thank you.
I think you raise an interesting point, but that's actually not what the zoning board can, can answer. That's, we're looking at specific use of the property, not, not the bit about the, you know, an easement on the, on the water. That's, that's not what...
But approving the zoning, does that not just override the easement? If you approve the zoning so that you say, build over that piece of land, you're then saying, build over that easement?
We're not, yeah, we're not saying, build over anything, and whoever owns the easement, they, they're the ones that should be saying that we have an easement on that.
And we need to protect it. Okay. That's fine.
Do you know anything about this easement that he's talking about?
So the easement, I think it's the Napontet River Watershed Association owns, it's on the other side of the pond. I spoke to, I think her name's Carrie, from the Napontet River Watershed. She asked about it. Carrie Schneider, yep. So that's what I am aware of. In terms of the pond itself, I think you mentioned, there's a, I think there's a meeting tomorrow night. Are they discussing the pond?
I believe there is. It's, it's on the electronic boards down in East Walpole.
I haven't really been involved with that too much, so I don't know where it is in the stage of how they're, you know, looking at what options in terms of, are they just making changes to the dam? Are they going to revert it to a river? Are they going to keep it the same? I couldn't answer that, because I'm not sure if there's a definitive answer on that yet.
Okay.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? Okay. So, Mr. Petrosi, Mr. Galasso, some revisions on this plan, and we need time to, we need time to have it reviewed by engineering and the other departments. So do you have anything else to add for tonight?
Can we come back tomorrow? No.
You're welcome to do whatever you want, but we won't be here.
When is, what, I know we're coming up on the holidays. What is your typical schedule during the holidays?
What's our December meeting?
So, we did schedule somebody for the 16th. Our usual meeting would be, I think it's the 6th or the 5th.
Fourth.
We have nothing scheduled for that. The last schedule is on the 16th.
So what's, can we go on the 16th?
Sure.
Okay. Okay.
And hopefully, we'll have town engineer or we'll have review comments by then? I mean, it's hard for us to have another meeting and not have comments.
No, we'll, well...
The first meeting in December might be pushing it for engineering comments, because they're busy around now.
Right. I think 16, the 16th is best, and we got these plans, you know, the revised plans today, so they'll have, have a chance to look at them. Also, the storm, you know, all the stormwater, and then address, you know, you can think about the comments that I had. I had a number of comments, and then Ms. Conroy's comment about the roadway width and also sidewalks. Okay?
Yes.
And I think Mr. Delaney brought up the bit about lighting. Was that you drew?
It was the board of health.
Yeah, board of health brought up it.
Would you, the board like to see a lighting plan before we get to the...
No, actually, my biggest concern about lighting would be if it's going, the poles would be shining on, into the back yards of people on, on Pinnacle Drive.
Yeah, no, this is still going to be well below any of the, any of the homes that are on the backs of the yards that are on Pinnacle Drive, well below.
Again, and it would be shielded, but that's the kind of things that should, should be shown in the plan.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. At the request of the applicant, does somebody want to make the motion to continue this until December 16th, 7:00 PM here at Town Hall?
So moved.
Moved by Drew.
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion on that? Okay. All those in favor of continuing until December 16th, 7:00 PM here at Town Hall, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, so carried. Okay.
Thank you.
Next case we have is case number 24-21 for, is it 37 Hutchinson? It's not on the agenda, but, I mean, the, the address is not on the agenda, but it is 37 Hutchinson. So notices here by given that the zoning board of appeals down in Walpole will hold a public hearing in the select board meeting room, Town Hall, on Monday, November 8th, at 7:00 PM on an application for case number 24-21 with respect to property located at 37 Hutchinson Road, Walpole, within the Residence B zoning district. The application is for a variance under section 6B1 of the Table of Dimension Regulations of those zoning bylaws for relief to the minimum side yard setback within the Residence B zoning district. Applicant seeks to construct a two-car garage addition as part of a larger home remodel. The attached two-car garage will be within the minimum side yard setback at 13 feet. We have some comments.
Do you have it?
No, I don't have that. We have from engineering. Engineering has no comments on this submission. We have, the fire department provides no comments regarding this application at this time, but the home may require updates to the smoke and carbon monoxides throughout. Garage will require one heat alarm that's interconnected to the home. What of health has no comments. From the police department, Luke Parlon said, "The attached plans have been reviewed for any impact on public safety and quality of life. The Walpole Police Department does not have any public safety concerns in relation to traffic in the case filed with the zoning board of appeals." And then we have your plans. So, if you would, please identify yourself for the record and explain what's being proposed.
Brian Bettenhausen, resident, 37 Hutchinson Road.
Lauren Bettenhausen, residence at the same place.
We're proposing a two-car garage to, as part of a larger remodel for our home there. I've lived in the home for 10 years now, and just looking to get two-foot variance on the side to get to 13 feet. And we have notes from the Butters on that side of the property, and some pictures as well of the property in between, just to show that there's just trees in between, brush in between the two properties.
Do you have a note here?
This is a note from the Butter, Kevin Abad, and then these are two pictures of the, between the two properties of where that proposed two-car garage and the existing one-car garage
So, I've actually, I drove down Hutchinson Road to take a look, and I saw what's, what's being proposed. You're asking for a variance, and a variance, did somebody explain to you that a variance has a high level that you have to meet?
Yes.
Okay. So, this is your chance to explain why, why you should be exempt from the bylaws that everybody else in town agrees to and, you know, has, has accepted and other people abide by them.
Yeah, absolutely. So, yeah, just for a little background, we've lived at the property now for 10 years. We have two small children. One goes to Borden Elementary, and the other one is still in daycare at Kids &amp; Company in Walpole North. We intend on building this two-car addition, this two-car garage as an addition to our larger remodel, so we can plan to stay in our residence for our children's lives and have them come up in the Walpole school system and be a part of the community as we have for the last 10 years. We both have, both have a car, the vehicle that we travel to work in to get our kids to practices and everywhere we need to go, so the existing garage is currently not usable, so we are just, we need to replace it, and we'd be better suited for what we need for our property to have both of those in there, a two-car garage structure. At the mo, at the time, as part of our renovation, it would, our, we would be a part of a significant financial hardship if we were to try and move this garage to the other side of the house. It would change the entire layout and the whole process of what we're trying to do in our renovation. We're just trying to extend the actual garage that we have now to keep the driveway, to keep everything in the same fashion it is. I believe the water line we had redrawn is, is towards the other side of the house that may be disturbed by a driveway or any other structure that's going through, so just for the easement of having the, on the same side of the house and not having to deal with the significant financial impact of creating it somewhere else.
Do any board members have questions on this? You mentioned the water service to the house. I don't see that on the plot plan. Do you know where that, where that is?
Yeah, it should be marked as the sewer on the, if you're looking at the plan, it's on the upper left side. I think they marked it on SRW. It's on the, if you're looking at the house, it'll be on the right side of the house, the opposite side of the current garage. I have the updated plot plan, it's not on that one.
Okay. Yes. That's...
Can you show me on here where the water line is?
Yep.
I'm not sure what set of, this is the most recent plan, so that would be the one that, if approved, we would reference. Look up to the road, you'll see, oh, it's on the old plan, too, SRW. 42.5 feet, seems like it goes into the corner of the house. Probably not exactly how it looks, but the point is, it's on that side of the house. So you mentioned financial hardship. That's not really something that the zoning board fully considers. We look at, is there, you know, something about the lot? You have a nice rectangular lot. I guess the biggest, is there another, another reason, anything about the geography or the topography of the lot that would make it difficult for you to do this garage on the other side or even in the back of the house?
Yes, on the other side of the house is just fully tree land, and we'd have the same issue on the other side of the house if we were to build a two-car garage over there with the setback and having a, the existing similar structure of a breezeway in between with a small in between. I believe it would just be outside that zone as well.
Okay.
I just, I just want to make a comment. It's not with your project whatsoever, but I really feel bad for applicants when they come in, that the architect has gone ahead and drawn plans without any kind of consideration of what the, what they were, what they're going to ask the homeowner to ask us. That's all. This is not the first time.
You're right.
I mean, we're solidly engaged with him, so if you have questions, he knows we're here tonight and like, you know...
No, it's, I'm just, I'm not, I'm just, I feel badly, because we've had several come before us, and it's like, we had one that they wanted to come in 10 feet into the 15, and they said, oh, well, there's only woods over there. Well, they had gone through three architects. Apparently, you know, maybe this is your first draw at it, but...
No, we tried to use the local architects in Walpole and people that have dealt in the town in order to try to avoid further issues that we might come up with, and hoping they would steer us to the right direction or at least kind of advise us.
I know, and again, it's not your project. I just, and I don't, I don't have anything at the minute about this one right now, but I just wanted to make a general statement. I think it's frustrating for us to have folks spend a lot of money on plans, and the architect has not even taken into consideration staying in the boundaries.
So that, that's, here's, here's my question, and I think, I'll come right out and say it. Why can't you make your garage two feet shorter so you wouldn't have to be here?
So, yes, I figured that would be the question on there. So the...
Thanks, John.
The minimum recommended garage size is 20 feet. With the size of the vehicles now, and we both have SUVs, and as we are in the New England area, there are many SUVs on the road, so the two cars, the two SUVs do not fit appropriately in the garage, so that's why we proposed a 22 and not go the, the original plan that they drew was 22. why we proposed a 22 and not go the, the original plan that they drew was 24 for, I guess, the normal-sized garage that they have now. When we realized that was going to the setback, we said, "Can we bring it down a little bit to enable us to have a better chance at, at having a proposal here?"
How big is the breezeway?
I, I'm going to give the plan.
It's like 9 feet.
Nine two, it looks like.
Nine three, eight nine?
Yeah, I think it was nine three, yeah. Actually, I wrote that down.
Just shave where, it's, you know, it's not for us to just comment on the appearance or anything, but, you know, is there a place to shave? Like-
Yeah, I mean, it would, it would require the whole remodel of that room to remodel the garage and that's, I think there's, yeah, you'd cut into the house, you'd cut into the frame, cut into the, what's there.
Maybe just to piggyback on John's comment, I would say the, the bar for these is, is pretty high. And so generally, you have to prove that there's really no other way to do it. And financial hardship is generally not a card you can, you can play unless it's pretty significant. So I, I think the question I usually ask is what, you know, what happens if this doesn't get approved? Do you have Plan B, C, D lined up to still kind of get what you want or get obviously something more than you have today?
Yeah. At the moment, Plan B would, we, we need a two-car garage for kind of how we're operating in our family and in our, in the town here with what we have, with our children and everything else. So the only other plan that we would have if we were to stay at the same residence would be to try to fit it in on the other side of the house, which would be a significant cost to basically get rid of the house to rebuild it in that neighborhood. So, you know, an avenue that, yes, I understand that would be the avenue we would probably have to cross if this isn't able to go there, but that would be the significant financial hardship side of, we would have to just redo everything and redo, not even just the plans, redo the house.
It's a tight lot, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
You're in a tight neighborhood.
That's a tough, we have just enough frontage in order to not be able to get the, the setback. But we're open, you know, our neighbor was, you know, nice enough to write the letter or, you know, and just kind of work with us as best as he could, knowing that it's not his decision, it's the board's decision. So, but just trying to support as much as we can for each other in the neighborhood.
I have a comment, yeah. Well, I appreciate the neighbor writing the letter. It's, it's, I think, more of a standard of the town of Walpole and sets a precedent for what is the threshold for an approval for the variance. With that being said, have you looked at, it looks like you have two individual car doors?
Yeah.
You looked at putting just one door in, larger size and-
Yeah, we, we've gone through the-
Sure, maybe, yeah.
Yeah, we've gone through the iterations of it. I think it's still, you still come up with the same types of issues. It, it makes it a little easier to get the cars in there, but the space is still not truly adequate for the two cars that would be going in there, be able to open them freely and get the kids in and out of the car seats and-
I completely understand.
Yep. I understand. Thank you for the question.
So the other, we're, we're talking about the garage.
Yes.
What about the, the mudroom? You know, is there anything you can do, do with this?
Yeah, they mentioned earlier, I think that would be, we would have to completely remodel the mudroom, which would be, you know, remodeling that portion of the house as well in order to get that shape to conform. So we're trying to keep the structure as best as we can in the manner it is.
Aren't you doing that anyway?
The mudroom's going to stay in the same structure, but, so we're trying to keep as much of the framing that's in there.
But you're going to put a second floor on it?
Yes, above it.
Figure. Already renovating.
There'll, there'll be a renovation that goes above it with the two-car garage that goes on with it, yes.
Well, I guess I'll ask again. I guess the breezeway that was mentioned.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want to get a two-car garage and a smaller breezeway and a smaller mudroom? Or?
Yeah.
Okay, so John will probably explain. If you don't, if this goes down, you have to have a substantially different plan. You have to wait two years.
Yeah, okay.
So if I'm, if I may, if I may continue, you can withdraw this without prejudice, take your plans back, go back to the drawing board and make your garage fit and your mudroom, whatever.
Inside the-
Stay inside the lines when you're coloring.
Would we still need, would we still need approval at that point if we're outside?
No.
We need any variance or anything, so.
Right.
Okay.
So-
Regardless, it sounds like if we would, if you were to vote, it's going to go one way and if we were, we're going to end up having to change the plans regardless of it.
No, what, what could happen is it could get approved, but I'll just tell you right now that I'm, I'm not feeling that this justifies a, a variance of two feet when there's other options that you could, could do. I don't know. Do other board members?
I agree.
So what Judy is letting you know is that if we vote on it and if we vote it down, you can't come back for, for two years. But if you withdraw it, you can go back to your architect and say, "Make this fit on the two feet," you know, "Do it, do it correctly." And you don't have to come to us for a variance. The, the problem with the variance is, it is, you know, as I said at the beginning, you're asking for something that nobody else in Walpole is allowed to, to have. And it's, it's really, we say it's a high bar to, to meet. And although we, we'd love the, all the things that you just said, but we, we don't look at, it's not about people, it's about property. And does this reach the, what's necessary for a variance? Drew, your thoughts?
Yeah, I'm not sure I agree with it, meeting the requirements of a variance.
Judy?
Tidoc.
Yeah, so-
Yeah, we can, we'll draw though.
And I'm sorry that you have to go through all this. Again, Judy said, you know, it's too bad that the architects don't look at that and realize how hard, you know, how hard a variance is. And I'll just say, in, I think, six or seven years of being on the zoning board here in Walpole, I think we've given out four, maybe, maybe even three variants, may, assigned variants, maybe four in, in six years. So it's, it's a very hard thing to, to get.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
So just to clear this and make sure we do everything right, after reviewing this with the applicant, do you want to withdraw case number 24-21 without prejudice and, and then basically we'll, we'll vote to allow you to withdraw it and then you go back to your architect? And I will say, by withdrawing it, if for some reason you, you, your architect says, you know, there's, there's no way this, this can ever be built without, without this two-foot variance, at least that way you have the option to come back to us. But if we, if we were to vote on it, you couldn't come back for two years.
Absolutely. Appreciate it. Yep.
You can also continue. Right. We close the hearing first. Is that what you're saying?
What's that?
We close the hearing first and then vote to withdraw.
Yes, yeah. But Drew said-
Could withdraw it at the next meeting if they're positive, then I can either adjust it.
Yeah. That's the other option. Yeah. The other option would be, and you wouldn't even have to come here, you could just send a letter to Patrick saying you want to withdraw it. You could meet with your architect and find out how you can do it and then, and if, if for some reason, you know, whatever reason, you absolutely can't, you're going to have to really show the zoning board that you absolutely can't, then you could, the case would at least be alive.
We can withdraw the case now, I think. He, he understood the plans as they came in and we certainly made him aware of, of the impediments of what happened there, so.
Okay. Then, do you want to, so at this point, do you want to close the hearing?
Yes.
Okay. So at the request of the applicant, does somebody want to make a motion to close the hearing for 37 Hutchinson Road?
So moved.
Moved by Judy.
Second.
Second by Mark. Okay. All those in favor, this is just to close the case. All those in favor of closing the hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, so carried. Okay. And you've said that you want to withdraw, withdraw the case. Okay. At the request of the applicant, does somebody want to make a motion to allow the applicant to withdraw case number 24-21 without prejudice?
So moved.
Moved by Judy.
Second.
Second by Mark. All those in favor, any further discussion on that? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, so carried. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Good luck. I hope you can make that fit. Okay, we have some minutes to approve and I did have a chance to review these. Let's go back to August 7th. One is executive session minutes. I thought it was appropriate and it was good. Does anybody have any comments or anything about the minutes of August 7th? Does somebody want to make a motion to approve the minutes of, the executive session minutes of August 7th?
So moved.
Okay. Moved by Mark, second by Dave. Any further discussion on the minutes? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, so carried. Judy abstained. Okay. You were here for it.
But it was matters of not my concern.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. I didn't want to get off the stage just for the vote, so I didn't hear what you said at all. I went like this.
Next, next is a set of minutes from September 4th. I did have a chance to review these and they, they looked good, at least to me. Does anybody have any comments or questions on these? Somebody want to make a motion to approve the minutes of September 4th?
So moved.
Moved by Drew.
Second.
Second by Mark. Any further discussion on the minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, so carried. Then finally, from October 2nd, we have minutes and this was a very quick meeting. This is the one where we continued everything, but I looked at it and it looked like everything was done correctly. Anybody have any questions or comments on October 2nd? Does somebody want to make a motion to approve the minutes of October 2nd? Oh, actually, it has to be either Judy or Tim.
I stepped down, didn't I?
You sat down at one point, yeah.
Sat down at one point, so I'm abstaining.
Tim, do you want to make a motion?
It sounds-
If you want to make a motion to approve, I'll second that, which I normally would not do, but it is, it is appropriate.
It's just a two-fold.
All those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Abstained?
Aye.
I can abstain.
Judy abstained, Mark abstained. Okay. Yeah, if you weren't here, you have to abstain from that. Okay. So that clears up some of the, the minutes. And Patrick, you said that we did have one more thing. If people would take the time to sign the-
Yeah. Again, the last meeting, we had the Burns App Woody B plan that was still endorsed. It was endorsed, but then I realized not every page was endorsed. So who remembers that? Sign that. Sign every page.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else? So that means before you leave tonight, if you would, sign, sign the rest of the copies of that, that plan. Okay.
Is 12-4 the next meeting?
12-4 isn't-
Four?
No.
Definitely 12-16.
12-16, okay.
12-16. Right now, we don't have anything scheduled for the 4th.
No.
So that's always good.
Okay.
Okay. I hope this makes up for our late meeting from last night, but that was important. We had a lot of things to cover. So, okay. Does somebody want to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Judy.
Second.
Second by Mark. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Good night.